Please rise for the hymn of patience by Reverend Bill Gerard, retired United States of America.
Post-pride. Your Lord, Your Retired, with hope and peace. We acknowledge to you that most of us are very busy during this season of the year. So much to do, so little time. Rush, rush, rush is our mantra. Oh God created us a calm in the midst of panic. A hope when we are overwhelmed with darkness and maybe even despair. Bring joy when we have forgotten how being with grateful hearts and laughing. May all in our city experience new life and pregnant possibilities for a better future that is announced this season. May we remember that that promise of Christmas is now as we seek to be a community where all have a place to lay their head and food for their stomachs. Thank you for those who served in our city government and especially a blessed Christmas for those in our city employee who will keep the services going while we're all gathered around the Christmas tree or feasting at the dinner table. Bless this time of those choosing our future tonight. May they be wise as the wise man. Bless us with peace on earth and goodwill for all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to ask Paul Thompson to come up and join me here. And first of all, I want to ask everyone to hear Paul standing ovation for keeping his position there. I don't know that I have heard many things said more often and more firmly that what a great job has been done at Transportation Insights property that used just eighteen months ago was just an old, empty mill building. If you haven't had a chance to go by and go inside, I urge you to do so. I'm sure someone there will show you the great work they've done. It is spectacular. And we are honored here in Hickory that Paul, who is the CEO of Transportation Insights, has been selected by Ernst &amp; Young. Ernst &amp; Young is one of the four biggest accounting firms in the world. And they have been for about the last forty years, I used to do with a competitor because they're... And for about the last forty years, they have honored the entrepreneur of the year on a state, regional, and national basis. And I am proud that Paul Thompson this year was the Southeast Ernst &amp; Young Entrepreneur of the Year. That's worthy of applause to him. Whereas Paul is founder and chairman of Transportation Insight and whereas globally recognized supply chain innovator, business leader, and humanitarian Paul was named an award recipient for the EY Entrepreneur of the Year 2015 Southeast Program in the Services category. Whereas Paul accepted the honor at the EY Awards Gala in Nashville, Tennessee for his achievements as founder or co-founder of eight highly successful North American companies, business strategists for numerous not-for-profit organizations, and visionary and top executive for Transportation Insight, the flagship brand in his corporate portfolio. And whereas Transportation Insight is a global trade top ten, three PL, and a North American leader in value-based enterprise logistics. Whereas Paul is also the driving force behind multiple acquisitions and the success of CHDL Logistics, a transactional truckload logistic firm, custom shipping solutions, an organization providing transactional less-than-truckload logistics, United Sourcing Alliance, a group purchasing entity, Total Insight, a lean consulting firm, and Property Acquisition Company, a real estate development organization. And whereas Transportation Insight and its clients have received logistics industry recognition for excellent sustainability and growth, the enterprise logistics provider has appeared on the INC 5000 list of fastest-growing privately-owned companies in the U.S. every year since 2008 to become part of the Elite Inc. honor roll. And whereas the fully renovated 1930's-era Lowly Mill is Transportation Insight's new corporate headquarters, it is a catalyst to urban revitalization efforts in downtown Hickory. Now therefore, on my anniversary, City Council, I recognize December the fifteenth, 2015, as Paul Thompson Day in the city of Hickory.
Well, thank you. I tell you, when I accepted the award, it was quite frankly very humbling because I was in a group of finalists and those finalists had created seventy thousand jobs. And quite frankly, I did not expect to win. I mean, that's some pretty remarkable people. So, one thing I'll tell you is the same thing I told them. You know, I accept this award and I thank you, but I'm just a guy with an idea, a vision, and some passion, but it's the associates at our company that make everything happen. You know, while I don't think I deserve any of this, we've got the best team of any company in North America. And if we keep doing the things we do with the people that we got, we will be built to last. So, this is for them and you may call it Paul Thompson Day, but it's Transportation Insight Day. Thank you.
What we will do is we will... I make the motion that we declare December the sixteenth, 2015, as Transportation Insights Day, and we will make a resolution accordingly. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Zageroli has a previous commitment and Mr. Paulson is recuperating from a severe burn. Porters requesting to be heard, we have Mr. Larry Potts.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Berry and Mr. Crump. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak with you this evening. I'm probably going to talk about an issue that has been before you numerous times, but I feel that it's very important for citizens like myself who are involved in the city of Hickory trying to do the right thing for the people who cannot stand up for themselves because of fear, reprisal, and concern for their own welfare. As I tell people all the time, I'm not afraid to stand before a city council or any other agency to encourage that agency, whether it's the city of Hickory or someone else, to always to do the right thing when it comes to citizens of our city. I said to you two or three previous times what I knew about what was going on with Hickory Public Housing Authority, encouraging you as a council who has the control on who's appointed to the board of directors for that organization, to do the right thing because the board refuses to do the right thing. You told me as a council that there was nothing that you could do or would do until the investigation was completed against Hickory Public Housing Authority. As you know, HUD came in, HUD did an investigation, and found that there are a lot of things being done publicly wrong by the board of directors and the executive director of Hickory Public Housing Authority, which now calls themselves Unit Four Capital Ventures. When you met with Unit Four Capital Ventures or Hickory Public Housing Authority, you as a council and the mayor did not ask one question
Three minutes.
of their executive director, their chairman of the board, or their attorney. As you can see from the report that you received back on the investigation that they did, how many improprieties there were that they could find and how many investments that they had made that they could not tell where the money came from for those investments. But yet and still, you still sit here on your desk, not willing to make any changes so that the citizens who live in public housing will not have to go through what they are currently going through and what they will be going through over the next several months. Yes, HUD has said, we will come back in in six months to a year and do another investigation to make sure that the corrections were made. And as they said in their letter was that a lot of the materials that they had told housing that they were going to be wanting to be able to look at was not available. That was because I personally was told by a very reliable source that there were individuals after hours working in the office there at Hickory Public Housing Authority, Unit Four Capital Ventures, taking out trash bags of shredded materials and throwing them in the dumpster. I said to those individuals, why didn't you go get those out of the dumpster? I personally know that the FBI can put back together shredded items because I personally turned over shredded items to them when links was in existence and that was shredded to keep the feds from finding out what they were doing with the monies that they were receiving. So what I will say to you is, it is time to unfold that rug, take the dirt that has been swept under that rug by you as a city council out and get rid of the board of directors that will not get rid of the executive director of Unit Four Capital Ventures or Hickory Public Housing Authority, whichever you care to call it. You still to this day don't know, or ultimately though, of Unit Four Capital Ventures, if you don't care, you won't ask, and you don't want to make a difference in what they are doing in the misappropriation of federal dollars. Thank you.
Well, some of this is going to be redundant, I don't know what to say, but it's going to be redundant in the sense that I've said it before, but for a number of people here who've not heard this said. Once again, we give the term misappropriation, and I always thought of misappropriation as unfair, and to my knowledge, there's been no accusation of anything. We have taken these matters very seriously. We have the unusual situation where we appoint the board members and we can't appoint them, appoint units, but the only other thing we can do is dissolve the issue. So that's been the framework we've had to deal with. We do care. We do want to make a difference in the lives of the least fortunate among us. The matter of the shredded documents, I think, is strictly hearsay. That possibly could be true, but I think Mr. Pope said that he had heard someone say that there were shredded documents. Many of the people in public housing here are very satisfied with the service and the safety, and repeatedly you read about people being arrested because they're violating, violating no trespass orders against them individually, including this week's paper article. So, the housing authority has not done everything right, that's for sure. They're not on the right side of HUD, that's for sure, but they have been pretty demanding of the standards upheld by the tenants. We have a motion for approval for the minutes of December first.
Motion approved.
Motion by Seaver, second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second read.
Approved.
Second.
Motion by Lael, second by Gess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All opposed, no. It was unanimous. Consent agenda, anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Motion approved of the consent agenda.
Motion for approval by Mr. Gess, second by Ms. Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Mr. Berry?
Only one new item of business this evening is a department report that I'll call on the city's Parks and Recreation Director, Mr. McCloud, to update council on the plans and naming opportunities at Clonan and Mill Park.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. I'm a mayor, I'm a council, and Mr. Berry, a strong good evening. I was talking earlier with Mr. Miller tonight, and I told him I realized that I was the only thing standing in the way of a shorter agenda of the day, and he informed me that that's a lot of pressure on me, so I'll try and see if I can handle that pressure tonight. Tonight's meeting has two full purposes for my presentation tonight. Number one being just wanted to be before you tonight, as we're still going through the process of with the Parks and Recreation Commission updating the Clonan and Mill Master Site Plan, wanted to just give you an update on where we are on that, and then wanted to talk to you and go through with you the process of consideration for naming, naming of the park. What you're seeing right now, back in 2009, the city of Hickory retained the services of Alpha Benson Company to develop a master site plan for the sixty-three acre park. And that plan was accepted by both the Parks and Recreation Commission and city council just to try and get everybody oriented just a little bit. On this Highway 127, it's the Clonan and Mill Road, here's the city's wastewater treatment plant, Old Mill Landing, Old Mill Landing here and then Ninth Street, Ninth Street here. As you recall, back in May of this year, city council accepted a $900,000 donation from Nortron Out and Bound to keep the ten acre commercial site, to put basically, keep it as part of the park. And as you can see on this plan, this is the, was originally set aside as ten acres for commercial, for commercial development. Once that donation was accepted, then staff, we went back again and retained the services of Alpha Benson Company, basically to update, to take this plan and update it and to incorporate the additional ten acres back in, back into the park, which would increase the park size to a little over seventy-three acres. And just to try and give you a visual comparison, Hilton Park, seventy-four acres. So, when Clonan and Mill is fully developed, it'd be a little, little, little less than that, and a little over seventy-three acres. We began the planning, first staff began the planning process with the two updates and master plan with the Parks and Recreation Commission at their, at their September, September eighth meeting. As part of that, that process was to start off with and get some ideas from the Parks and Recreation Commission as what neighbors feel needed to be, would best be suited in that incorporating those ten acres into the park and then making any adjustments elsewhere in the park. And so the way we started that process, and that may be difficult to see, but I'm going to talk about that, we had a, basically some potential recreation activities that could be included on those, on those ten acres there. The first discussion really that Parks and Recreation Commission had was ensuring, making sure that it's enough, when the park's fully, fully developed, there's enough parking there. I'll get into that, I'll get into that in a few more slides. But basically, we discussed with the commission, these seventeen potential recreation activities, talked to them about those, and then all those activities that were received at least, so you can see the activities in those ranges anywhere, and I noticed it may be difficult for the audience to see, but let me just read, read what those potential activities were from top to bottom. This open play meadows, community garden, jogging, walking trail, outdoor fitness stations, disc golf course, sand volleyball courts, shuffleboard courts, horseshoe pits, natural area, picnic areas, dog park, spray ground, playground, mountain bike trails, environmental education areas, boshing courts, and then the commission came up one that they wanted to look at, be a bike training area, a safe, you know, just an area within the park, level everywhere, you know, kids could, kids could learn, could learn to safely, learn how to ride a bike. So once each, once each item, then we took each item and basically asked the, asked the commission to vote on their preferences, how important they felt that recreational activity was and needed to be included within the park. And of the seventeen that were, seventeen of the play, twelve received at least eight votes. And some, some of the activities that were already, were already in 2009 plan, and because of the addition of ten acres, were able to, able to expand those. So every, every recreational activity that they received, at least eight votes of the Parks and Recreation Commission members, was incorporated into the plan. So after, after their September eighth meeting, Alpha Benson Company went back and took those comments and those suggestions and developed, developed the new, developing an updated, an updated plan based on, based on that input, brought this plan, this plan is still in, still in draft form, Parks and Recreation Commission has not accepted it yet, but brought it back to the commission at their meeting, matter of fact, last, a week ago today, for further input. And what I'd like to do is to spend a few minutes just, just taking you through the, taking you through the, the plan. Going back to, from a parking standpoint, we were able, and let me help you, if you notice, this is the ten acres that was originally, you first saw here. This area here is now, is now this area. The first thing, with the addition of the ten acres, we were able basically to adjust the, to adjust the park entrance to bring it, to bring it up, up closer to 127 to give us a better, a better line of sight. Before, it was basically down here, you know, down, down, so we were able, we were able to bring, bring that up and get a, get a better, better line of sight. On the original, on the original plan, I'll just concentrate on this side, on the original plan, we would call it forty-nine, forty-nine parking spaces on this western side. On the eastern side, which I'll show you in just a few minutes, had twenty-five spaces there, but it was forty-nine, forty-nine spaces there. We've been able to increase that from what was originally shown in 2009 plan, forty-nine spaces, from forty-nine spaces to a hundred and nine spaces, just on this western note. There is some additional future parking there, so when the, when the park itself is fully, is fully built out, then we will have a total of a hundred and sixty-three available paid parking, paid parking spaces. I do want to point out, and that may be tough to see right there, but if you see this building right here, when we were staff, our staff was having, reviewing this plan with public, public services, public utility staff, public services staff made a request of a unique feature that they would like to see included in, into the overall park plan, and we titled that as a, as a Future Water Resources Learning Center. And that goes back to the environmental education component that was a, that was there. And this will be a future development in, in the overall park plan, but because of the proximity right across the street from the wastewater treatment plant, I think this will provide an opportunity to provide that educational component. What, what we're looking at here, and please understand, this is about a seventy-five, seventy-five hundred square foot learning center, but just to share with you some of the type of things that the public utility staff and business could be learned in this facility, is talking about the water site. Talking about how water gets from the plant to, to the faucet. You know, what happens when it goes down to the, down the drain, back to the wastewater treatment plant, ways to protect the environment, how to be water smart, and this will basically be an interactive type, interactive type facility. It will be planned, also have some meeting space in there. It will be some meeting space, conference room, conference room type space. Some of the, some of the interactive activities that they could take, take us here is, is kids and adults too pumping water up here, test the water quality, see what the water quality is, how to locate an underground pipe, you know, follow robotic camera into a sewer manhole and see what it looks like, and then just fun things, just sitting there and turn hydrants and valves and hydrants on. So it's just a, I think, interactive learning resources center that really, it really fits in well with the, with a wastewater treatment plant. really fits in well with the, with our wastewater treatment plant that sits across the, you know, sits across the, uh, across the street. Couple of other things we did down here, um, this area down here, as you see, is the, is the, uh, city's pump, uh, pump station for the wastewater treatment plant. So one thing about the additional acres, we were basically, we were able to shift these loop trails, just to get them away from that pump station. On, on the original 2009 plan, we were really right up against, right up against this pump station, so we were, we were able to back off and give, give us a little bit of distance, um, between operations here and, and, and the park, park operations. Uh, you saw back on the, one of the, one of the areas that the Parks and Recreation Committee got high post was, was open area, so we have a play lawn here, just a, a, a basic, an area where different activities could happen. The size of this is about the size, size of the football field. Uh, going, going around that, and, and I know it's hard to see, and my, the consultants and my staff got a big kick out of it because of the name Promenade Loop, is what that's named after. This is the bike training area, uh, it's about a quarter of a mile flat, and you have to understand, this is the flattest part of the property. These 10 acres are the flattest part of the, part of the property on the side, but about a quarter of an acre, quarter, excuse me, I saw a quarter of a mile paved path that allowed kids to be out on the, kids to be out on the bike. One thing with the additional 10 acres, we've do, we've got a, a plan, a mountain bike, a mountain bike course. In the original plan, that mountain bike, we were allocated about 11 acres for that mountain bike course, we've now been able to expand that to about 12 and a half acres, a lot, allotted, allotted for that. Uh, we do have, I know it's hard to see, but in this area, right there, we've got two playgrounds planned here, and also playgrounds planned on, on the, on the eastern side of the park. These, these playgrounds are planned to be a little bit different than what you're currently seeing in a park, uh, just due to the setting here, we're looking to go to a nature theme, make the playgrounds, but with natural products, instead of, instead of what you see now, so we're looking for a nature theme, natural, nat, natural type, uh, products. Um, and also, we've got here, there are picnic shelters, we've got three different picnic shelters, there's one here that will have restroom, restroom facilities, and then two, two off to the side, uh, two off to the side of, of the parking lot. Really, the one change we were gonna make in here, we got up in this corner, uh, volleyball course on this picnic shelter, and this area here is a wooded area, it's still flat, and, and some commission members felt it'd be important to kinda separate this, to still allow access into that for some future development, so that's one change, uh, that's one change we're gonna make in the, uh, in the plan. So, basically taking that, and then the next slide, this is now the entire, the entire park, uh, master plan, including the eastern, uh, the eastern note, and just to note, uh, no changes are being made, you know, proposed by the Parks and Recreation Commission, uh, here, here on this, it basically is staying a, as is from the, from the original 2009 plan, but once we get on the ground, we may have to shift some trails around, but from a planning, planning standpoint, uh, really, the planning process is just to take and incorporate the, the 10 acres back, back into the park. As I said, the Parks and Recreation Commission will be considering the acceptance of the final park master site plan, uh, at the end of January 12, 2016 meeting, along, and at that same time, then we'll, we'll be reviewing, uh, the associated construction cost estimates, and they will be making a recommendation that then will be forwarded and brought back to you, uh, for your consideration at, at a, uh, at, at a future meeting. At your December the 1st meeting, um, it was the consensus of council, your desire to name, to rename the park in honor of former council member, uh, Meisner, and really, what I wanted to do, just take a few minutes and go with you through that, through that name, through that process, and, and how it would, you know, how it would work. Um, I know there is a copy of the city's public facilities, uh, naming policy, uh, in your agenda packet, but what I'd like to do is take through the Cliff Notes abbreviated version, uh, of that policy, as you can see there, city council has the sole authority to designate the name of public facilities, either in home or in park, and city council will consider proposals for the naming of a street, park, public open space, building or an area within a park, public open space or building to recognize a person, organizational, organization, historical event, geographic location, or feature, or plan, or animal indigenous to the Hickory area. And naming proposals, they originate in, in one of three ways, according to the policy. City council or an advisory board appointed by you proposes a name for a building, a park, a street, or public open space. Uh, city council accepts a donation of land, money, materials, animal services, where the donor has stipulated a naming will occur to recognize that contribution. And then the third, the third way is an application is received from a citizen or a group of citizens who wish to recommend a naming of a building, park, street, or public open space. So the three naming proposals, the one that will be coming to your consideration is the first one, where city council, uh, is proposing, uh, that name. Um, we're going further, I just wanted, what I wanted to do with this slide is, is I just wanted to take a minute just to get your consensus as to how you wish to propose a name, uh, to be considered by the Parks and Recreation Commission. So staff, we're proposing Brucey Meisner Park, but that certainly is how, however you would like to see, we just, the name that you wish, uh, it to be, will be what will be considered by, by the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Why don't you ask Bruce?
I can do that, yes sir. I can cer, I can certainly do that.
He might want to add E in there, he might want to just read Meisner Park.
Yeah, and we did, we, just so you know, we, we did this based on the two, we have, we have two, Glen, Glensey Hill Junior Park, and then Neil W. Clark Junior Park, so that, that's the reason why we put the, the, the middle.
Guyner Park, though, is Guyner Park, right?
It was, it's actually Rotary Guyner Park, but Mr. Mayor, I, yes, I would certainly, at the consensus count, I'll, I'll talk to Mr. Meisner and that.
Don't let Mr. Meisner add Meisner Park and wastewater treatment.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Who's calling the Meisner campus out there?
Uh, a name, a naming proposal that's originated by city council for a park, then is forwarded to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a recommendation. Uh, the Parks and Recreation Commission then will announce the naming proposal at another meeting, and then call for a public hearing to hear comments on the proposal. Based on, on your, your request at your, at your December 1st meeting, uh, staff went back, and what, what we're proposing to do is that Parks and Recreation Commission's, uh, Jan, January 12th meeting, uh, we were, we were basically, and I, I briefly discussed that with them at their meeting la, last week, but I told them at their, at a January, you know, at a January 12th meeting, we'll really go over that process in detail with them about what to do, and then we will ask them to call for that, call for that public hearing at, at the Tuesday, January 12th meeting, and we will hold that public hearing, uh, on the naming proposal at the, uh, February 9th, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission meeting. Uh, once, uh, once the Parks and Recreation Commission makes that decision on the naming request, then the chairperson or his or her president, then will present that recommendation to city council for your consideration and, and ultimate action and decision. So based on that timeline, then, the recommendation for the naming, uh, request could come before you as early, uh, as your February 16, 2016, uh, meeting. So with that, uh, I, I'm gonna stop there and be more happy to answer any questions that, that you may have, either on the, uh, master plan update and/or the, the, the naming process that we will, uh, we will, uh, follow.
What's the estimated cost?
Alpha Benson, they're working on this cost estimates right now. Mayor Ryan, what we wanted to do first at the December, at the December 8th meeting is come back, we wanted to come back and present a draft plan based on that, based on their comments. Now, after we've done that, our consultants now are putting, are developing those cost estimates. I understand when we did, when we did the, the plan back in 2009, those cost estimates we have are 2009 costs, and they're six years old, so we're also adding, incorporating additional 10 acres into the park, but they're working on those right now, so being prepared to present those back at, at their January, January meeting.
In 2009, it was two and a half or three million?
Yeah, the, the entire park was two point, right at 2.9 million.
But that, that was before or after the 10 acres?
That was, that's before the 10 acres, that's what I'm saying, that, that was before the 10 acres, that did not include the 10 acres. So I would say those, those costs, those costs will, will go up.
But the 2.9 million, at that time, we had expected to offset that by the proceeds from sale of the, well, the, the, the $900,000 donation.
That has been set aside for, uh, to go towards the development of the park, so yes, sir. Yes, sir. And like you were saying, yes, the, the plan was that if the 10 acres were sold commercially, that, that proceeds from that sale will go to the park development. Likewise, outbound donation of $900,000 has been set aside to go towards the, uh, park development.
Well, I, I am just thrilled that we can have that 10 highly visible acres on the corner, part of the parks, and the, we, we like, we like merchants, we like retail and all, but if the demand's there, he'll find a place.
Any other, any other question? I thank you, thank you for your time.
Appointments, I'd like to appoint Laura Costello, the Public Art Commission, and I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Ms. Patton, delegate, to the policy.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that's unanimous. And I guess, before we appoint an officer, in fact, I just assumed, as Pat will be willing to serve. And, uh, we didn't need to talk to some people if they'd like to be all in, so we're trying to get that done at the next meeting, and if somebody would like to volunteer here and there.
I think that guy said something, but.
I, I do want to say.
This is our chance. You're all warned. You know, let's do it so he'll never trust us. I made a motion, we appoint Mr. Crawford, they all agree?
I'll second that.
Second by Patton, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, he is duly appointed and will serve unless he refuses to.
I think he'll be a good man.
I think he will. Uh, anything else, matters not on the agenda? General comments? We had ribbon cutting today, uh, not very glamorous, but it is, uh, critical for the growth of our area. Uh, ribbon cutting for the Catawba wastewater treatment plant, which will be, of course, operated by the City of Hickory.
Yeah, no, y'all own it.
Yeah, we own it, yeah. It will be capable of accommodating, I think he said, 700,000 commercial square feet and 2,000 houses?
1.5 million gallons.
Uh, I'd like to wish everybody, my council, fellow council members, Mr. Paul, Mr. Berry, the staff, a Merry Christmas, and I'd like to extend to all of the people living out there in the City of Hickory, a Merry Christmas and a Happy Monday. Any other comments? If we want to vote, make that unanimous, we wish them a Happy, Merry Christmas and a Happy Monday.
Unanimous.
It's unanimous, yes, sir. Thank you all for being here, and we have a motion to adjourn. Motion by Patton, second by Seager, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no, that's unanimous. Thank you all.